Yes, thank you. Yes, our team tonight includes Thomas Weisong, Tori Haynes, Tom Leidinger, Tammy Rosario, and Vlad Gervlovic. They'll be presenting various material here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen, and good afternoon to the Planning Commission Working Group. I'm Thomas Weisong. I'm a senior planner with James City County. And alongside me, I have Tori Haynes, senior planner, and Tammy Rosario, the assistant director of community development. And together, we will be presenting the land use section. Next slide, please. Today's staff will be presenting a number of items for the land use section for your consideration and discussion, including the technical report, a summary of the land use-related community guidance we have received thus far, the open space programs briefing paper, the JCSA analysis of independent water systems, and the future land use map materials. Your packet also includes currently adopted land use map descriptions and development standards, and goal strategies and actions which have not been revised at this juncture. Next slide, please. As is expressed throughout the technical report, the linchpin of James City County's land use planning is growth management. There are a number of tools that fall under the category of growth management. These tools include direct growth controls, urban containment with growth boundaries, facility planning, infill and redevelopment, as well as regional planning. Next slide, please. The primary service area, or PSA, is the county's principal tool for managing growth. Essentially, the PSA is a combined growth area that directs growth to areas where land is most suitable. As can be seen on this slide, the PSA accomplishes a number of goals, including increasing the public benefit per dollar spent -- oh, John, do you mind going back one slide? Thanks. Increasing public benefit per dollar spent, encouraging the efficient utilization of public facilities and services, helping to ensure that these facilities and services are available where and when they're needed, promoting the public health and safety through improved emergency response time, to minimize the well and septic failures within the PSA, and to encourage the utilization of rural lands for economically beneficial agriculture or forestry and related uses. Next slide, please. Residential development is a key consideration for growth management. For this update, planning staff has updated the calculation for the amount of residential capacity that is within the primary service area. As can be seen in this table, staff analyzed the estimated development potential for approved projects and residential lots, as well as the undeveloped parcels that are designated for low-density or moderate-density residential, plus the undeveloped parcels that are designated for mixed-use or economic opportunity. By this estimation, there is an estimated development potential of 11,486 units within the PSA, with 20 to 26 years until these units are absorbed. And staff used the residential CO trends to calculate the time period of absorption. Staff also looked at and analyzed the non-residential component within the county, and I'll hand things over to Tori for her presentation regarding the non-residential piece.
Thanks, Thomas. On this slide, we have groups related zoning districts together into categories, and sums the total acreage for each category. So about half of the county's acreage is zoned agricultural or rural residential, and about a quarter is zoned residential. 10% is commercial, industrial, or mixed-use, and 16% is public land. Next slide. Staff approximated the acreage of commercial and industrial developable and partially developable acreage within the PSA. Staff also summed the acreage of parcels designated commercial or industrial but not yet zoned as such. Staff counted both developed and undeveloped parcels in the designated-not-zoned category in keeping with the methodology used in previous comp plans. All estimates include a broad assumption for land that may not be developable, such as RPA or landscape buffers. Next slide. Other tools used in conjunction with the PSA include policies and ordinance requirements guiding new developments. Proposed development may trigger physical improvements such as pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, or additional studies like traffic impact analysis. Legislative cases may also include proffers or conditions intended to mitigate the impacts of development. Staff tracks development through the use of our case managing system and produces cumulative impact reports annually. Green space and preservation programs have been utilized to preserve critical lands inside the PSA. Land conservation is complemented by land-efficient practices, such as encouraging clusters and redevelopment, and maintaining opportunities to construct mixed-use and higher density development in appropriate areas. Next slide. There are a number of tools available to local governments that apply to the protection of rural lands, generally falling into two categories: enhancing the viability of the rural economy and retaining rural character. The tools must be tailored to reflect local land use regulations, market forces, community preferences, landowner expectations, property values, and fiscal constraints to be successful. Next slide. Here you see an example of the open space tool decision tree. Choosing the right tool depends on how a property owner wishes to preserve their land for how long and for what purpose. Next slide. Agriculture continues to be an important part of the diverse economy in the county, as well as upholding rural community character. Next slide. Trends captured in the most recent census of agriculture showed that farming in the county did not necessarily mirror statewide trends. The state has generally seen a net decrease in the number of farms overall since 2002, while the county has generally seen a net increase in the same timeframe. Both the county and state have seen a net decrease in total farm acreage since 2002, but the county did see an increase in acreage since 2012. And now I'll hand it back to Thomas to discuss development trends. Next slide.
Thanks, Tori. For residential trends, the county has undergone continuous rapid growth since 1970. In fact, in the past 50 years, the county's population has more than quadrupled, growing from close to 18,000 people in 1970 to a little over 74,000 people as of the 2018 American Community Survey. Currently, approximately one-third of the county's existing dwelling units are located in large master-planned communities, which are those with 500 or more homes each, and 87% of the county's existing dwelling units are within the PSA, which shows the effectiveness and power of that growth management tool. Next slide, please. As can be seen in figure LU4, the number of units added in the county over the past decade has risen and fallen with market trends. Between 2010 and 2019, the county added an average of 432 residential units per year, with the average number of units added for 2010 to 2014 being 385 units per year, and the number of units added for 2015 through 2019 being 480 units per year. This trend line is in keeping with the national recession and downturn in the housing market, which began to recover throughout the decade. Next slide, please. As can be seen in figure LU2, the total number of units in the county has increased by approximately 5.4% from 2015 to 2019, showing a steady trend as the housing market recovered from the Great Recession. And as we move on to the next slide, we see the breakdown of these units for rural lands versus the PSA. So during that same time period, the number of units located in land designated for rural lands has increased by approximately 7%, at an average of 57 units annually. The percentage of the county's total dwelling units located in rural lands has remained constant during this time, at approximately 12%. Next slide, please. With regards to commercial trends, the county has experienced significant diversification in business and industry since the 1990s. This trend was aided by the development of Newtown, which includes a mixed-use area approved for more than 1 million square feet of commercial space. In the past decade, commercial development in the seller's market section of Newtown has completed build-out of approximately 400,000 square feet of commercial space. There's also complementary commercial development in Newtown that exists within Courthouse Commons, Courthouse Green, Windsor Mead, Monticello Marketplace, and Monticello Shops and Developments. And there's also commercial development spread throughout the county. Next slide, please. With regards to industrial trends, industrial growth has concentrated in the James River Commerce Park and Green Mount Industrial Park. In the last 10 years, Jacobs Industrial Park has added significant infrastructure in several businesses in this area. The county's industrial base includes three Fortune 500 or Fortune Global 500 firms, Anheuser-Busch, Ball Metal, and Walmart. And in 2019, we had the exciting news that Navien Incorporated announced its plans to establish a manufacturing and assembly center within the Stonehouse Commerce Park. Of course, there remains available industrial property in Stonehouse Commerce Park, Hankins Industrial Park, the James River Commerce Center, and Green Mount Industrial Park. Next slide, please. Another indication of overall growth and its impact on county services is the demand for public water and sewer. Sewer and water service connections have risen to meet population demands and to respond to health concerns. As can be seen in figure LU5, the number of water and sewer customers for JCSA has increased steadily on an annual basis over the previous decade, with the water customer base increasing 1.8% annually on average, and the sewer customer base increasing 3% annually on average. As can be shown on the next slide, public water and sewer infrastructure has expanded in tandem with this growth. As you can see, the total mileage of water facilities increased by 20%, and the total mileage of sewer facilities increased by 17% during this time period. And when you compare this to the residential annual CO data with the water and sewer customer growth for each year, it is markedly clear that increased residential development positively correlates with increased demand for public water and sewer services. Next slide, please. In addition to updating the development trend information, the technical report also includes expanded information regarding regional planning efforts. The Ford Useless Joint Land Use Study is the prominent addition to this section. For context, during the 2015 comp plan update, the county received a request to change the land use designation for the vast property from general industry to a mixed-use designation, which ultimately prompted the Joint Land Use Study to come about. Now, that application was not approved, but it brought to staff's attention, and to the military's attention, that it would be good to study this area. And the reason for that is that the base is a very large installation. It's close to 8,000 acres, and it supports a population of 22,000 people, and is quite important to the national defense, as well as the economies of the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Hampton Roads region, and James City County. Next slide, please. Now regarding the process, the study commenced in January of 2017, with the objective being to identify land uses that are compatible with the mission and use of Ford Useless, as well as develop growth management guidelines for surrounding communities. The county was an active participant in the 15-month collaborative planning process that produced the Joint Land Use Study. And there were multiple stakeholders included in this event, such as the U.S. Department of Defense, Office of Economic Adjustment, the Ford itself, the city of Newport News, the city of Hampton, of course, James City County, York County, and community residents and business representatives were included as well. Next slide, please. The Joint Land Use Study has recommendations. The study recommends that the county and the base establish formal communication procedures to ensure that development proposal and policy changes from either party are communicated clearly and in a timely manner. The land use study also recommends that the county establish a military influence overlay district, which is a policy tool that would ensure a representative of the base would have the opportunity to provide comment and guidance on land use policy decisions and development proposals within the county portion of the study area. Next slide, please. In addition to regional planning, the technical report also includes a summary of other policies, including those for large retail establishments, strip commercial development, continuing care retirement communities, or CCRCs, short-term rentals, and timeshares. Of all these policies, short-term rentals was the most expanded in this update, to include a summary of the county's current regulations for this use. And that makes sense, given the amount of attention we've had for that item in the last few years. And now I'll turn it back over to Tori for her presentation on the community guidance portion.
Thanks, Mr. Crop. Sorry, everybody. Hopefully, be a little more stable now. So moving on to community guidance, community input is a key driver for the land use chapter, which is impacted by all of the public input themes we've discussed throughout this process: community character, natural environment, affordable housing, local economy, and quality of life. The 2019 citizen survey had a response rate of 35%, and the Summit on the Future allowed citizens to provide feedback in person through live polling exercises, a preserved change activity, and the Big Ideas Map. Next slide. Here you can see some of the results from the citizen survey. And I'll note that here, the residential and industrial numbers got swapped. So starting from the top, this is actually the industrial development input. There was a noticeable increase in the percentage of people who thought industrial development was about right or too high. For commercial development, the 2014 survey didn't break down office and retail. So the 2019 survey offered a little more insight into the types of commercial development that citizens felt strongly about. Overall, there was more satisfaction with office-related development than retail. And finally, at the bottom is the residential development input. There was actually a slight increase in the percentage of people who think residential development is too low, and a slight decrease in the percentage of people who think it's too high. And there was an increase in the number of people that felt residential development is just about right. Next slide. 79% of people agreed that developers should always be required to pay a fee to the county to offset public costs, even if it means increases in the price of their services or new housing. This is nine points higher than the response from 2014. 78% of respondents agreed that it's important to preserve farmland in the county over development. And this is nearly identical to the response from 2014. Next slide. Nearly 98% of people favored having developers provide amenities like sidewalks, bikeways, streetlights, parks, and street trees. 81% favored reducing the number of lots a person can subdivide a large rural parcel into. Next slide. At the Summit on the Future, 65% of people stated it was important for the county to improve its efforts to protect and preserve rural character. 87% stated it was important for the county to improve its efforts to protect and preserve the natural environment. And when asked about the future of lands outside the PSA, the highest-ranking answer was protect as much rural and environmentally sensitive land as possible. Next slide. When asked about their biggest concern for the future, the highest-ranking answer was changing the community character, such as the loss of rural vistas, historic places, and small-town feel. When asked what was the most important objective for the county, and what that ought to be, the highest-ranking answer was managing growth. Next slide. For the preserved change map exercise, citizens were able to identify areas that they wanted to preserve or change. Recreational and historic areas such as Jamestown Island, York River State Park, and Chickahominy Riverfront Park were identified for preservation. Grove, Towano, Newtown, Eastern State Hospital, Lightfoot, in that particular segment, on Monticello from 199 to News Road, were all identified as opportunities for both change and preservation. Next slide. At the Big Ideas Station, we got a lot of feedback on preserving the small-town character of the county and encouraging development to locate inside the PSA. There was general support for mixed-use development with efficient use of space. The Eastern State property was specifically called out as an opportunity for future mixed-use development. People also recommended locating amenities like shopping and dining next to independent living to allow greater access for residents. And now I'll hand it over to Tammy to discuss open space programs. Next slide.
Thank you, Tori. The open space programs briefing paper that was included in your packet, had a lot of material associated with this current effort, as well as previous effort to brief the board on opportunities moving forward. This is the beginning of the conversation in this process. It represents Part 1, sort of an assessment of current conditions and existing programs. It will be followed by a Part 2, with aid from the consultant, for future considerations for James City County. All of this is oriented toward answering the questions the Planning Commission Working Group asked throughout earlier points of this process, while also integrating into it the big picture of where we've been, where we currently are, and the possible futures of open space programs. The first part of the open space program briefing paper focused on scenic view sheds. The county is blessed with a number of beautiful and scenic view sheds, and benefited from the recognition and protections given to them in previous comprehensive plans. This was reinforced by various policies and zoning ordinance regulations, which helped apply what might have been just for legislative cases to most developments that come into the county. There was the Green Belt policy in the early comprehensive plans of the county, which, again, sort of focused on the legislative approvals. Later on, there were the zoning ordinance revisions related to landscaping standards and timbering standards, as well as right-of-way buffer requirements for zoning ordinances applications for by-right development. But there were still gaps that presented themselves, and situations in which development could occur that were not going to be affected by these zoning ordinance changes. And these gaps had been addressed historically through some of the green space and PDR program efforts. Next slide. In particular, there was discussion at the Planning Commission Working Group regarding Forge Road and other rural views. It's important to know that when we're thinking about open space qualities throughout the county, it may be helpful to assess what values we're trying to protect. There have been some recent efforts by the state, as well as efforts at the local level, to help us identify those more clearly. But regardless, it's best to make a determination of what we're trying to protect and match the best strategy to it. Some strategies are geared toward reducing the development pressure on the property. Others might be related to really zeroing in on the appearance along the right-of-way. Others might really be focused in on affecting or influencing the actual use of the property if we are, in fact, trying to preserve some agricultural or forestal use or environmental sensitive area on the property. The open space memo that was attached to the briefing paper talked about different targeted geographical areas in the county, such as Forge Road, but also some different conservation values that we have used for measurement in the past. Next slide, please. Layered on top of understanding the geographical priorities and some of the conservation values of the county is a consideration of the parcel threat of development. And that helps us understand if we want to work in a proactive manner to target certain properties, and we've typically done that through the green space program, or if we're going to be acting in more of a reactive manner to those that might come to us in an application sort of system, which is how the county has operated its PDR program in its earliest stages. Regardless, it's helpful to know that the Board of Supervisors is consulted at different points along the way, and there is a public meeting component, a public consideration slash public hearing component, when the property actually moves toward acquisition. Next slide. There has been considerable community guidance on different aspects of the county's open space efforts, not just related to specific open space programs, but just different things that we might want to consider as we work toward increasing open space preservation in the county. One grand theme through all of it is that the issue of preserving natural areas and rural character is consistently ranked the highest in public concern and support. We can also derive from the different reoccurring themes, an idea of what the public wants to conserve, and their preferences on how to conserve it. And there were a number of different points to that in the briefing paper, spelling that out in more detail. But round three of our engagement efforts aims to go a step further to gauge support for varying types of protection measures, the different levels of support for the different categories of natural lands, undeveloped lands, and open spaces that can be protected. And as the CPT works through the different questionnaires, there will also be a mechanism through MetroQuest when we're looking at character guidelines to look at rural lands protection. And then in addition, when we ask the public regarding the land use applications, we can also gain additional input that way. I wanted to note here that there was a question related to the questions for round three that we included in your packet. That was an attempt to capture sort of in-motion or under-discussion opportunities with the CPT. It was not their final version. This packet went out last week prior to the CPT's meeting, so we were trying to anticipate where the CPT was headed with the round three questions. There has been some revision to them, but again, the main notions of trying to gauge support for varying levels of protection measures and support for different categories of open spaces will remain part of the round three engagement efforts. Next slide. As I mentioned, this is Part 1 of our open space programs briefing paper. We do have additional work ahead of us. As I mentioned, we will be planning and implementing round three public engagement items. We will also be looking to understand what that means in terms of revising our land use section or other related sections of environment, community character, et cetera, throughout the process. The concepts mentioned in the scenario and policy framework documents will be further examined for inclusion in the section and the GSAs, and that will be part of a future memo, where we look at the preferred scenario framework and policy framework guidance. It will also look at James City County's existing programs and policies, other locality's approaches, and recommendations for James City County. With that, I'll turn it back over to the land use team to go through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Tammy. And for this initial review, staff has not revised the existing land use map descriptions and development standards that were adopted in the current comp plan. But of course, members of the working group are encouraged to think about those things and continue to provide suggestions and comments regarding those descriptions and development standards. Next slide, please. And for this initial review, staff has not revised the goal, strategies, and actions that were adopted in the current comprehensive plan. We are, however, currently being to examine potential revisions to the GSAs, and have tentatively identified some actions to be potentially revised. And of course, members of the working group are welcome to provide initial suggestions and comments regarding the revision of the GSA, and to provide suggestions for questions to include in the next round of public input. Next slide, please. So growth management trends and JCSA analysis, included in your packet, is an analysis that JCSA put together regarding independent water systems. And for areas outside the PSA, the subdivision ordinance requires for developments with six or more lots, which are referred to as major subdivisions, to have a community-independent water system and supporting infrastructure. And essentially, how that works is that for these subdivisions, the developer is responsible for constructing the well facility and infrastructure, which is then turned on over to JCSA for maintenance. And as has been discussed during the past two comprehensive plan updates, it is the case that operating these systems currently results in a JCSA deficit. So as I mentioned, JCSA provided this fiscal impact analysis, and staff requests that the working group provide guidance on whether the county should explore eliminating the independent water system requirement for major subdivisions outside of the PSA. Such a decision Such a decision would result in one less barrier, potentially, to residential development within the rural lands and would affect other growth management tools and policies used by the county. As you may recall from the diagram that Tori presented earlier, the rural tools are all connected to one another, so a change in one would actually impact the others. If the working group affirms that the county should explore eliminating this requirement, planning staff intends to prepare a concise summary of the potential land use policies and revisions to the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance to ensure that residential development is not encouraged within the rural lands as a result of that decision. And we look forward to the working group's guidance on that matter. Next slide, please. Last, but certainly not least, your packet includes information regarding land use applications and the future land use map. This document provides an overview of the applications for land use designation changes that are being considered at this point, as well as potential applications that could proceed with the working group's recommendation. Furthermore, this document also includes the non-designation change options that may be most appropriate for addressing the public input received thus far from the rounds of public engagement, as well as your input as the working group. And I'm sure this is going to be a topic of some great discussion, and we have set time apart in the back half of the meeting to go through each of these applications within the spreadsheet. Next slide, please.